Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'm Rebecca Johnson. I am one of the co-presidents of the League of Women Voters of Bellingham-Watcombe County, and I would ask if you would all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started, I'd just like to remind everyone to please turn off your cellphones, ringers. That would be very helpful. The voter forums are presented by the League of Women Voters of Bellingham and Watcombe County and the City of Bellingham. The city has provided the facilities, and the forum is being telecast live on BTV-10. Forums will also be repeated on BTV-10, the city's YouTube channel, and on low-powered radio stations, KMRE and KAVZ. And the Bellingham Herald is our media partner. We thank all of these partners for their generous support, and if you have the opportunity, we hope you will thank them too. Founded in 1920, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization with 800 affiliates across the country. It encourages understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not endorse candidates or political parties. Membership is open to men and women of all ages, and we would invite all of you to join. Now, I'd like to welcome our moderator for this evening, League member Jane Feudenberger.
Thank you, Rebecca. Tonight, we are hosting county council candidates for District 1, 2, and at-large. The League will be holding a forum on October 23rd at the Mount Baker High School in Demming for District 3, and once again, the at-large candidates will be there too, and the Mount Baker School Board candidates will also participate. Please check our website for further information. We are starting tonight with the Watcombe County Council at-large position, and I'd like to introduce the candidates, Barry Buchanan and Mary Kay Robinson. The county council is the legislative branch of government, and it enacts ordinances, adopts the budget, and exercises oversight of the administration. The council can override a veto by the executive with a two-thirds majority vote. Watcombe County has a seven-member, nonpartisan council. The at-large council member is elected by all voters in the county, while all the other candidates are elected by districts. The county council exercises its legislative power by adoption and enactment of ordinances and resolutions. The council's main duties include adopting plans for the present and future development of the county, conducting public hearings on matters of public concern, creating county government policy and land use rules, enacting public safety laws, levying taxes, appropriating revenue, and adopting the county budget. It's a big job. County council members serve four-year terms, and their annual salary is $30,660. Before we begin, here are the rules of the forum. Candidates will have one minute each for an opening statement. They will have one minute to respond to each question, and will make a one-minute closing statement. Each candidate has a challenge card. Would you hold up your challenge cards? Okay. Candidates can use this challenge to rebut an opponent's response. The challenging candidate will have 45 seconds to state the challenge, and his opponent will have 45 seconds to respond to the challenge. Each candidate may use this card once during the question-and-answer period. Candidates just simply wave your card if you want to challenge your opponent on a certain question. I'll try to remember to look. Carol Como and Judy Corless will be tracking the time. Please raise your hands.
Oh.
The timer's raising their little things. The timers will flash a yellow sign when 15 seconds remain and a red sign when the time is up. If a candidate continues, a bell will be rung, and that means stop talking now. We ask that the candidates be respectful of the time allotted due to the limited amount of time that we have and our desire to include as many questions as possible. Fostering civil discussion is an important goal of the League. To that end, we ask that those in the audience be respectful and refrain from comments during the forum. Please hold your applause until the conclusion of the debate. We encourage members of the audience to provide written questions for the candidates. Questions should be addressed to both candidates. Ushers are available to pick up your questions and bring them to the screeners at the table to my right. That's Joe Collins of Kirsten Behren. Uschers, please wave your hands so people know who you are, up there and right here. Questions will be screened—I already told you that—by our League members right here, and they will be screening for legibility and clarity and to avoid duplication. To start us off, the candidates roll dice, and the high-roller had the choice of going first with his opening statement or her opening statement, or giving the last closing statement. This means a candidate will either speak first for the opening and first for the closing, or to be second at both times. We will rotate which candidate responds first to the questions during the Q&amp;A period part of the forum. So with the rules covered, let's get started. Timers, are you ready? The winner of the dice roll was candidate Robinson, and her choice was to do the first opening statement or the last closing statement, and she chose to do the last. Is that right? So that means candidate Buchanan, we'll start with you. Your one-minute opening statement, please.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the City of Bellingham for hosting our forum this evening. My name is Barry Buchanan. I am the current Chair of the Watcombe County Council, and I'm running for reelection to the at-large seat. I'm a U.S. Navy veteran and a fourth-generation Watcombe County native. I have served on the Mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Commission. I've served as President of the Letter Streets Neighborhood Association. With my wife of 44 years, we founded the Bellingham High School Alumni Band that marched for 14 years in the Ski-to-Sea Parade. I served a term on the Bellingham City Council before I was elected to the Watcombe County Council. I want to keep working on things to protect our environment, to protect our public health and safety, and to protect our jobs, and I think it's important that we keep working on those kinds of things that stabilize our county. Again, I'm Barry Buchanan, and I'm running for Watcombe County Council at-large.
Hi. My name is Mary Kay Robinson, and I've been serving this community for over 30 years. My husband, Jess, and I have three children. My son, Eric, is a professional musician, and he tours the world in a band, a very successful band. And Katie is a Director of Residential Marketing for an energy conservation group down in Oregon, and Zoe is in her first year as a Peace Corps in Africa. They're great kids doing a lot of great work, and we're really proud of them. My background is I have a music degree, bachelor's, and a master's in business administration. Kind of an odd pairing, but it allows me to combine a creative approach along with financial and analytical skills for problem-solving, for effective problem-solving. I've been a public school teacher, a nonprofit executive, a banker. I've been in business for a long time, and I have a broad experience that I want to bring along with decades of community service leadership that will combine to bring a unique perspective to the council and the issues that we face. My name is Mary Kay Robinson. I'm running for county council at-large.
Thank you. All right. Well, we'll start the first question with candidate Buchanan. How would you describe the particular qualities you value about living in Watcombe County? How would those qualities influence your approach to decision-making as a council member?
Well, I was one of those folks that left Watcombe County after I got married in 1973 and was definitely called back. I think it was the, you know, it was the inspiration of living in a place that has the most beautiful environment, and I really want to protect that, and I want to work hard to make sure that we have good jobs, because it was hard moving back here after working in California at a defense contractor and, you know, really a good job. So moving back here to raise our kids in a place that was much better suited for our family was the reason I moved back, and I want to keep certain this community to make sure that families have opportunities to live in a safe community and a healthy community.
So when I first arrived in this community, coming up I-5, I looked at Lake Sandwich there and thought, "Oh, my Lord, this is the most beautiful place on earth," because I've lived in several parts of the country prior to that, and I was excited to raise my family here and my kids here. As far as where we are today, we live in the most beautiful part of the country, I think, and I've been in different parts, but my concern is that we don't have affordable housing for the next generation, the jobs. The wages in Bellingham continue to be lagged behind the state average, and prices for rents and houses are spiraling, and so I'm concerned about what's going to happen for the next generation. Yes, we live in a beautiful place, and we certainly want to maintain that, but I also want to make sure that we can ensure opportunities for the generations to come.
What actions could Watcombe County take to increase access to health care in Watcombe County? And this question's for you, candidate Robinson.
Okay.
First.
For health care, I believe there's some wonderful organizations here in the community interface that does a great job. There's lots of nonprofits, dentist get-together that provide services. Certainly for the homeless, there's the Homeless Connect event that providers come together and offer those services, one of which is Law Advocates, which is one of the groups that I'm associated with, which I'm really proud to be a part of that, and providing those services for those in need, and then counseling, you know, for different insurance policies, et cetera, but really bringing the community together and being aware of the needs that are out there. I think we can serve a lot of the underprivileged in our community and do a good job with that.
Candidate Buchanan.
As you may know, the Watcombe County Council is also the Board of Health, and I serve as Chair of the Health Board, as well as I serve on the Public Health Advisory Board. And the Health Department and the programs that they come up with and they provide to our community do great service to our community. We have taken on an initiative of healthy planning, and that is whenever you're looking at a land use issue, one of the lenses that you look at it through is health care and is public health, and, you know, is there access to food? Is there access to, you know, good water? The Health Board really does a good job of making sure that we prepare our community for devastating traumas, like we had the Zika virus. We had a big briefing on that, so it's really important that we support our Health Board.
What is your opinion on the November ballot issue to build a new jail, candidate Buchanan?
I voted no on that, because I think we are just getting started on criminal justice reform. We formed the Incarceration Prevention and Reduction Task Force, who contracted with the Vera Institute, to find programs, more programs than what we already have, that will reduce the population in the jail. And I think that we've just kind of put the cart before the horse by putting out a new tax that's going to cost Watcombe County taxpayers over $200 million in 30 years. I think there's more work to be done to truly go into criminal justice reform, look at the cash bail system, look at how we handle pre-trial inmates as far as getting into more of the electronic home monitoring thing for nonviolent offenders who are pre-trial.
As far as the proposal, the proposal includes millions and billions of dollars for mental health issues, substance abuse issues. It provides millions of dollars for public safety, of which Bellingham itself would get a million dollars annually, and I really want those programs, because we have a need. We have a crying need. The current jail situation is unacceptable, and we need to do something about it. When I look at weighing the programs and the lives of the people that are in that building and the risk, heaven forbid there be a catastrophic event in that building, and look at the programs and what it could help for those individuals, and then I look at the number on the jail, is it perfect? I don't know what's perfect, but if we wait for perfect, might we lose a good opportunity? It is a lot of money. We need to consider that, but we need to consider that as a community. We need to decide together. I support putting it on the ballot. All seven cities and mayors and the county council voted to put it on the ballot, and we have to decide together what we're going to do with the folks that have made some errors in the past and how they're going to move forward.
Okay, and this next question, you will start. Are protocols for Lake Watcombe water quality adequate? Why or why not? If not, what further measures would you advocate for?
So, you know, certainly continue the programs that are going on as far as Lake Watcombe, reducing phosphorus into the lake. I'm always in favor of a cared approach and encouraging people as far as using native vegetation to stop the runoff and stop the pollution. As far as the—my one concern that I have is that there's been a new tax that's been imposed in the watershed areas, which to me indicate more of a budgetary issue. Yes, we want to have that line item to protect the water supply, but if we're not prioritizing what our budgets are, then we're failing in what we're doing from a budget standpoint. And if we're just going to throw in tax after tax, there's not an unlimited supply of tax dollars. We need to make those decisions and make sure that we follow that, and then if we want to do spend more money in that program, then so be it, but let's stay within the budget, just like we do in our homes.
The protocols and programs that we have are excellent. Our problem is funding, and if you look at any given program, there's always a line item for EPA grants, and we all know what's happening to the EPA under this federal administration. We can't not depend on those dollars. We need to accelerate the cleanup of Lake Watcombe, I believe. I think 50 years is way too long. I'd like to see it be 40 or 30 years, and it's going to take new revenue to do that. There's no question. In all of our water projects throughout the county, it's the same situation. We need more revenue.
The State Supreme Court's Hearst decision requires counties to ensure that property owners who rely on wells for water show that a new well will not impinge on the overall water supply or the water rights of others. In response, county council enacted an interim ordinance that withholds building permits unless property owners can present such proof. Here comes the question. The current county council has asked the legislature to fix Hearst. Do you agree that there are legislative remedies, and if so, what are they? Do these remedies protect Washington State senior water rights?
The most complex thing about the Hearst decision is the intersection of three different court findings, one being the Hearst decision. The second one is one that says you cannot disrupt the in-stream flow by even one molecule, which is very hard to prove or disprove. And the third one is if you mitigate, you have to mitigate in time and in place, so it makes it a very tough fix for a local level. So we do need the legislature to give us some relief, but, you know, if you really look at what this problem is, this is a growth management problem. It started decades ago when we refused to listen and not build our growth from the urban center out and preserve and not sprawl into the rural area. That's what started this whole thing. We wouldn't have had a Hearst decision or even a suit if we would have been more responsible with growth management.
So the Hearst decision came because there is a change in decades of interpretation of water law in that water—a well—is exempt from—it's considered exempt because it has a minimal impact. So right now, the effect of the Hearst decision is that we have landowners that have been financially devastated, and we are all going to pick up—the tax, by the way—for the shift in the land values to the tune of about $200 million because of that result. The county council right now has not done anything, and we are the last county in the state to try to find a solution. Everybody else has done something. We need to do something about it to move forward, because quite frankly, we've had three special sessions with the state legislature. I'm not terribly hopeful about that. I do have some ideas and reviewed some options on my Facebook site, Families for Mary Kay, that if you want to go through and see some of the options that I outlined, we can do that, but I think we need to move forward.
So aside from the availability of water, what are the needs of the agricultural community that should have the highest priorities? Are there actions the council should or could take to make those needs? And we'll start with you, Mary Kay.
So as far as the water availability, certainly we can look at extending the PUD, extending that water to folks. We can look at whether or not the City of Bellingham is going to extend water to the Lumine Nation as far as their development. There's options available. There's water. It's just as in the right place at the right time. You know, there's been issues as far as water banking and some other options, but there really—it's a lot of exchanges of pieces of paper as far as the actual legal right versus the actual water. It's a complex issue, and unfortunately, we have like a limited amount of time to go through some of the options of what we can do, so check my Facebook site again, and we can discuss that further after the meeting if you wish.
I would really like to see us be able to use some of that diversion water in the middle fork of the Nookseck and be able to use that for agriculture. I think that is one of the answers. Another answer is I agree with what Mary Kay said about PUD and the water districts, to allow them to be able to expand their service—not their service areas, but the users within their service areas. It's expensive to run pipe, but it's one of the answers. Ag needs the water, but we have to make sure that they're getting it legally and they're not taking it from other senior water rights.
What should the county do to support areas of the county designated as food deserts due to access to—no access to healthy food options?
That was one of the initiatives that we took up in the health-in-all planning, was to have access to food. Some of the communities out in the East County, they just closed their only grocery store at Dodson's IGA out at Nugent's Corner, so they don't have access to food, and I would really like to see us work with the communities out there to be able to give them some relief for the amount of square footage that they're being held to, to build a new grocery store out in that area. So there's some things the county can do to help move that along.
So the loss of that Dodson IGA, for instance, is certainly a loss, and what I'm looking at more is that bigger picture, too, that whole farm-to-table experience, and if we have farms that are functioning and doing well and providing produce so that they can have farmers' markets out in more rural areas, they can exchange with neighbors, we want to be able to support farmers and have those initiatives, like the farmers that have gotten together recently to determine as far as water quality, what exactly what DNA is actually contaminating those waterways, for instance, coming together, finding a solution, bringing those parties together to try and mitigate that food supply issue that we're talking about. Just like they're tackling the water contamination issue, we could come together and tackle the food supply issue and encourage our farmers to stay in business and provide food for our community.
How do you define affordable housing, and what do you see as county government's role, if any, in making it easier for families to obtain it?
I define affordable housing as housing that is for all economic segments, not just subsidized housing, not just for the wealthy, they can usually take care of themselves, but it's for that vast middle class who are either renting or want to buy a home. You know, I've been involved in advocating for affordable housing virtually my entire career, whether it's through Habitat for Humanity or Culchon Community Land Trust, and probably the most memorable loan I ever did with Culchon Community Land Trust was for a gentleman with developmental disabilities, and he worked as a janitor, and I put together various grants to have the loan package so that he could actually buy his home, and he is still in this home today after 15 years. It's probably one of the most gratifying things that I did. I understand the programs and the policies that it takes to put that together so that we can address the housing needs of our community, and I look forward to doing that.
One way we can decrease the cost of housing is to streamline our permitting system. I talked to one of the biggest builders in Watcombe County, and he said that housing prices can escalate up to 25% just for the delays they encounter along the way getting permits. So, you know, we've got to be able to get out of the way and make sure that it's an efficient process, and there's not a lot of value put into—you know, lost during that process. You know, another thing is that the county can dedicate some land to a project where they could work with nonprofits and the City of Bellingham. We could have private and public partnerships that have the goal to be able to provide affordable housing for our community.
All right. This is the question for candidate Buchanan. What should the county do about the opioid crisis? Please include the county's pharmaceutical—is that stewardship? Stewardship proposal in your answer.
Yeah, I'm all for the stewardship proposal. It's, you know, it's really encouraging the take-back program, where you take your prescription drugs back to your pharmacy. Now, we've had an issue where opioids weren't allowed to go through that process. They had to go through the police station, and so people were a little nervous about taking things, you know, that were potentially illegal substances that they had, because they hadn't got it through a prescription, because they had to take it to the police. But I believe that we need to be able to allow those pharmacies to be able to take that back and be accountable, check it in, just like it gets checked out, show ID, and it needs to be accountable.
I support that take-back, and as much as easy access as we can provide, because when we put restrictions on the method by which to do so, that's where we get the non-participation. So the easier that we can make that for people to participate with turning in those drugs and reducing the chance of someone experimenting, of someone trying, well, just this once, kids, you know, we need to make sure that we do that. We could also, you know, partner with our schools to make sure we educate about the opioids and how devastating that is to families. We need to support those programs, you know, DARE, those kinds of things, so that, you know, kids understand this is a dangerous thing. Talk about the lives that have been lost due to opioid overdoses. It's a serious issue, so I support the program absolutely.
All right. This is your last question. In general, what do you consider the role of government should be, and how would that be reflected in your decisions as a county council member? And we'll start with you, candidate Robinson. It's always the last person.
So as far as my decision-making process, I look at a couple of different ways. I look at what are the benefits of a program and is there a potential harm to that program? And if, okay, if we weigh that out and we decide that there's benefits, great. Now, how do we measure those benefits? How do we make sure there's accountability and we get the desired outcomes? And if we don't have that in place, how do we know that we're actually achieving the goals that we're setting out? So I like to see accountability within the programs, because this is your taxpayer dollars that we're spending. We want to make sure we're getting the biggest bang for the buck, as it were. So I look at those programs, make sure they're effective, and they're actually achieving the results than that are intended.
Candidate Buchanan.
My priorities are, number one, public safety, and I think that shows in that I was on the team that was the architect for the EMS levy, the Emergency Medical Services levy, that was successful on last year's ballot. I worked very hard to get that done. In fact, I even wrote a song and recorded it for their video that they had on Facebook. So I'm a big into public safety. I'm into public health. Obviously, as being the Chair of the Health Board, I think that's really important. The environment, and certainly jobs. We have to make all this work together, and we can. There's endless opportunities for us to succeed on all fronts.
Okay. All right. It's time for our closing statements, and candidate Buchanan, you'll go first, and candidate Robinson will be second, as she chose.
Again, I thank the League of Women Voters and the City of Bellingham for hosting us tonight, and I just want to say that I feel that I've fully lived up to my campaign promises that you elected me in 2013. We had a big looming coal project out at Cherry Point. The Lumine Nation helped take care of that, but we helped take care of a lot of that, too, with the moratorium that we placed. I feel that we've—you know, by being a leader and standing up for the Emergency Medical Services Program, I feel that I contributed a lot to the community doing that. I would continue to be a leader in all aspects of my job as a counselor, and I would really appreciate your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
You know, we live in a vast and diverse county, both from the standpoint of geography and in residence, and I don't—personally, I don't think the county council is doing a good job of truly listening to that diverse group of people who are telling them about the impacts of the actions. Checking the box for public participation is different than actively listening to all sides, and I believe the council could do better. I also believe we need to challenge the status quo. Why isn't the council assessing the costs versus benefits of proposals and measuring desired outcomes of existing rules before adding on new regulations? I intend to use my financial expertise to make sure that we do that. I've held leadership positions for as long as I can remember. I was a president of the Washington Student Music Education Association when I was in college, and last year, I served the 800-member Watcombe County Association of Realtors as president. And last year, I served the 800-member Wacom County Association of Realtors as president. And I'm ready to serve the community of Wacom County as a county council person. I'm Mary Kay Robinson, and I ask for your vote for Wacom County Council at large.
Thank you very much to both of you, and we would thank these people for running for office. As most of you know, this is the first year that only voters living in a district get to vote in that district, and this is District Two. And I am introducing already the candidates, Todd Donovan and Amy Glasser. The same ground rules will apply for this race. I also want to remind the members of the audience, you've been sending good questions, so keep at it, because that's very helpful. And they should be addressed to both of the candidates, so raise your hand if you want the ushers to bring you another card, or if you have one to give them already. We're going to start with the one-minute opening, and candidate Glasser won the dice toss, and she chose to go second. So we'll start with candidate Donovan with his opening statement.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the league and the city for hosting this. And particularly, I've had an opportunity many times to speak before the league, usually about my academic professional work, not myself. So this is kind of a different and weird situation that way. But the league's done all this work on campaign financial reform and elections and promoting democracy, the stuff that's near and dear to my heart. I'm Todd Donovan. I teach at Western in political science. I've been there about 25 years. I've served on a lot of community boards. I was on my neighborhood association, the Chair of the Washington Conservation Voters. I've been on the Citizens Election Advisory Commission. Been active in politics outside of government for years. And in 2014, I ran for the Charter Review Commission. 2015, I ran for county council. I'm running for reelection early because of a redistricting situation in order to also avoid running against sat polls to do in 2019. We can maybe unpack that and talk about that more. I'm Todd Donovan. Thanks for being here.
All right. Candidate Glasser.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear okay? I'm Amy Glasser, and I am not a politician, not yet. I am a social worker of 40 years, and I am hoping to get on the council to work with Todd and the rest of the council to help make the county a little bit more user-friendly for the marginalized people in the community. I've seen that it appears that Bellingham is often given the brunt of the solutions for homelessness, for poverty, for mental health problems. And I think it's a county issue. So if I'm elected, what I would like to be able to do is make sure that we go to all of the cities in the county and give everybody the responsibility that they should have in taking care of the people in the county that are unable to take care of themselves. I want to do that by making sure we don't build a big new jail, and instead we build homes and services. I'm Amy Glasser, and I'll tell you more. Thank you very much for having me here, and thank you to the league.
All right. We'll start with our first question with candidate Glasser. With regard to the change in district-only voting, how do you think representing a district differs from representing the entire county? How do you see your role in representing those outside of your district?
That's an interesting question. I guess I have to say that, I don't know if this is the right answer, but as you'll find out, I just say what the answer is, and I take the consequences as they are. Once the North Bellingham people elect me, I'm representing the whole county then. North Bellingham, of course, deserves representation, and I plan to do that for my North Bellingham residents who elect me. But I don't think you can look at the county problems and just represent a piece of it. I'm a systems social worker, and it's just impossible to just represent what Bellingham needs and not take into account what the entire county needs, has to have, and must do to make everybody work together and solve our problems. So I think it's, once you get me in office, I will be representing the urban issues, but with the slant of the fact that I lived in the county for 11 years and understand the issues there are incredibly important also.
Candidate Donovan.
Yeah, it's a great question. I'll start with, I'm not a fan of districted voting, and I sort of wish we'd stayed with countywide voting. When I was elected, I was elected in a countywide position. And when you're running countywide, you're campaigning in Point Roberts, you're campaigning in the South Fork Valley. You're learning a lot more, and I actually wish we could kind of go back to that. That said, I've lived in the North Bellingham District, District Two, for 25 years. My kids went to Columbia Elementary School and Bellingham High School. I really feel that I have a stake in that district. I know these neighborhoods. So I think I'm in a really good position to represent, I think I mentioned before, I've been on my neighborhood board. I've been an officer in that. But I will represent all of Wacom County. I think it's really important that everybody on the county council gets out of their district and listens to people throughout the county, and hopefully, maybe we just get rid of districts someday.
All right. So we'll start with you for the next question. If elected, please describe the leadership that you would offer to resolve issues of water quality and water quantity. Be specific.
It's me, right? When the Hearst decision came down, my initial reaction was to try to figure out a way that we, the county council, could, not only say defy the Supreme Court, but get people who are invested in properties currently who got blocked by that decision to be able to get permits. And we did a little bit of that, but I don't think that's the ultimate solution. In terms of the water quality issue, we need to be metering, I'm sorry, quantity issue, we need to be metering. We do need help from the legislature. Any kind of water banking, any kind of exchanges are going to take changes in state legislation. So as far as the water quantity thing, we can work even before the legislature does stuff, just doing better water modeling, better accounting of who's got what water. In terms of water quality, we need to be investing in programs like the Pollution Identification and Control Program. We need to be investing in programs that are saving our shellfish beds. And I'm, as Chair of the Natural Resources Committee, dedicated to doing that.
Candidate Glasser.
I think in terms of the Hearst decision, we obviously have to respect it. It is what the court tells us to do. I think there are several things that we could be doing. One, for people in the county, is lowering the amount of water that a household could use per day. It's 5,000 gallons, and that's way more than necessary. I think we could be doing water banking and things that we need help from the legislature for. But I also think we could potentially add, see if the associations out in the county, like the Coastal Water Association, would maybe branch out and give water rights to people a little bit farther out than their usual district. In terms of the quality of the water, I will start by saying, and I don't know if it's still a plan, that there was a plan to put a Wildwood Resort on Lake Wacom, which would include a whole bunch of boat slips. The idea of doing that, when we want to make the quality of our drinking water better, seems insane. So one of the things as a council member is I would do my best to limit any kind of large projects that would interrupt the quality of the water that we drink.
All right. We'll start with you with this question. Can you envision a plan for Cherry Point that produces lasting living wage jobs and also protects the environment, the existing fishing industry, oil refinery, and aluminum production? How do you recommend achieving these goals?
Well, we're not going to do anything on that fourth pier because it's the Lummy Reservation and the Lummy tribe's base. And if we start building on that, we realize, and so did the Army Corps of Engineers, that it gets in the way of the Lummy treaty rights. So one of the things I think we should be looking at is retraining people over at Cherry Point and encouraging retraining in wind turbine industries, in solar panels, in solar inverters, and in everything that China's doing a lot now that we should be doing here. We have wind, we have sun, we have farms for hemp. We have all of the resources to make this the renewable county of the country. And we need to start doing it now, and we need to convince the people over at Cherry Point that we don't want to get rid of our jobs, but eventually, the jobs are going to go away the same way asbestos jobs went. We need to retrain people in good-paying jobs, and the only way to do that is to be realistic, that the fossil fuel jobs are going to end at some point.
Candidate Donovan.
In terms of the plan, I think we actually have a very solid plan. It's our comprehensive plan, which recognizes that Cherry Point is an industrial UGA, that it is, preferences are given for heavy industry. We need to recognize that whatever might happen in the future with fossil fuels, there are multi-billion dollar investments out there that aren't going away, that our county's economy is very dependent on. We're not going to retrain people at Cherry Point to grow hemp and somehow replace the fossil fuel industry. My opponent keeps bringing up hemp when it comes to fuels. That's just not something that's going to happen in Wacom County. We do need to recognize the sovereign rights of the tribes. We do need to make sure that we are not damaging the environment out there. I was, you know, in favor of blocking the coal terminal. I worked for that when I was running for office. And before I ran for office, I'm opposed to seeing crude exports going out of here. That's another way we protect jobs out there, is to make sure that the county has some way to manage new proposals that are going out there that might bring more unrefined fossil fuels to go out here, which would kill jobs by taking refinery jobs and putting them offshore. But Cherry Point is a heavy industry area, and it's going to remain a heavy industry area.
All right. We had a challenge from candidate Glasser, and you have 45 seconds to tell what your challenge is. And candidate Donovan, you have 45 seconds to answer.
The idea of using hemp is not a hippie dippy stupid thing. Hemp makes homes. Hemp makes building materials. Hemp makes food. Hemp makes medicine. Hemp oil makes energy. We have to look at everything when we look at what our county can do in terms of growing new industries. And we have a lot of farmland out there, and hemp doesn't require a lot of water. It doesn't require a lot of anything. It actually is incredibly good for the soil. It's great for renewing nutrients in the soil. It's great for a rotation crop. It's great for, it's great for everything. And I'll also say that honestly, before my opponent got elected, I didn't see him around fighting the GPT terminal the way I was. I looked back, and I couldn't find a single comment made by my opponent. I was fighting there way before.
My turn?
Yes, it is.
Wow. I won't comment on the coal thing. I'll just let everybody who was involved with that and who worked on that issue look at that and judge for themselves. As far as hemp, yeah, we have a lot of farmland that's very well-suited for dairy and berries, and those are very profitable commodities and crops. And in my understanding of state laws, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to grow hemp in this county, given some of the things that the marijuana lobby has done, from cross-pollination. So if you want to go to the legislature and work to change our agricultural base to hemp, I'm going to work to protect jobs at Cherry Point, and those jobs are in refineries, and they're not in exporting raw crude.
All right. Now, I'm confused that, I think we start with candidate Donovan this time. Wacom County is currently number five in cost of living in the state and number 12 in wages. What can the county do about this difference?
Cost of living, I'm assuming, includes housing costs. So we have to think about our housing costs. How much can a local government do to affect housing costs? And how much can a local government do to affect wages? We probably have more leverage over the housing cost issue. Our dilemma here is that the more we talk about protecting and succeeding and preserving the beauty of this place, the more people want to come here, and the more housing costs go up. So we have to examine and encourage and incentivize different types of housing stock. We have to get the city of Bellingham realizing, and they don't right now, but realizing that they might have a net fiscal interest in expanding their urban growth areas. It's not something that pencils out for them. So that's something that we have to work on. Wages, as a county government, we have some ability to use our Economic Development Initiative money to incentivize and recruit and retain businesses that might pay and will pay higher wages. But we all have to realize that, you know, we're a local government. There's macroeconomic conditions out there that really kind of drive these things.
Candidate Glasser.
We could use some of that economic development money instead of fixing windows in the courthouse, and we can use that to encourage different businesses to get here. We can use some of that money to encourage builders to build low-income housing and maybe forego some fees or some hookup fees. I know that it's really difficult to keep housing prices low, but prior, Mr. Buchanan was talking about doing public and private partnerships, and I love the idea. And we've been basically fighting the council up until now, hoping to get a little bit of that land to do some public-private partnerships to build tiny homes for people. And we, we in the community, have been blocked with a whole bunch of different reasons why zoning isn't good and building codes won't let it happen. But if we want to make more affordable housing, we have to accept the fact that houses should be smaller and can be a very small footprint and still make everybody happy. But we need to change things and try some pilot projects. And the only way to do that is to actually let that start happening and to try some of those projects.
You have a challenge.
Yeah. When do I start? Yeah, I like the idea of tiny houses, but I think we need to be realistic about this. The county doesn't own land we can just stick these tiny houses on. My opponent, Amy, has suggested the county should be paying to build these tiny houses. We're going to, I guess, then also be buying the property, or we have to change, we have to tell Ferndale, we have to tell the city of Bellingham that they have to change their zoning ordinances. I've been working for a decade to try to get detachable ADUs in my neighborhood, just my neighborhood, with some, you know, maybe success. There's a little bit of success in some neighborhoods around here. But going to tell people that we're going to have them put tiny houses into, as you've been saying, house homeless people, I mean, maybe that's one of the things in the toolkit, but it's just not a realistic solution to affordable housing here. And it's not necessarily a realistic solution. It's maybe part of the solution to homelessness, but not to affordable housing.
Candidate Glasser.
I think it is. I think there are a lot of other communities outside in Washington and all over the country that are realizing that tiny homes are the answer. And a small footprint for somebody who's a senior on a limited income, where it's a dollar per square foot, and after a certain amount of years, they own the home. If we have small homes that are being built, we can make that happen. And we can do that for homeless people. We can do that with service buildings. And there is land in the county. Barry said there was land that we could be using. So I want to take them up on the offer, and I want to make that happen. Because unless we start building, there's going to be more and more people dying in the streets this winter from frostbite. And either we sit on our butts and we do nothing, or we start acting and start building. I'm not asking the county to build the homes. I'm asking them to provide the land and the hookups. We have donations for building the homes.
So here's a question that goes along with this topic. The city of Bellingham has asked the county to insist in its search for a building that is suitable for a city subsidized homeless shelter in partnership with the Lighthouse Mission. Do you consider providing such a site a priority? Why or why not? And it's up to you first.
Me?
No, I think it's Glasser. Got confused with the challenge.
That's an excellent question. I am so glad they didn't build that shelter. 200 people in a shelter on the waterfront, homeless, low barrier, with pets, would have been every problem that the waterfront ever had would have been the homeless people. It would have been their fault. I'm a social worker. I've been a social worker for 40 years. We should not be building 200-bed anything. We should be building small shelters in communities, small housing shelters for men and children, for women and children, for single people, for single men. There are no shelters for men and children. And we don't need to spend millions of dollars building a big shelter when what we actually need is small ones throughout the county. And I would support building those small shelters throughout the county instead of the waterfront and have everybody share in the responsibility of taking care of our people. That shows how compassionate we are, and it's not just Bellingham problem.
Candidate Donovan.
Yeah, and I'll follow up on the last thing. I mean, you are on record on KMRI in a radio interview saying the county should pay for building these tiny houses for the homeless. This could cost the county millions and millions of dollars. So when we talk about a low-barrier shelter costing millions of dollars, your proposal could potentially cost a lot more than that. We need a low-barrier shelter somewhere. I'm not going to tell people we should take the homeless people out of my district and put them out in Ferndale and Linden. That might be part of the solution, but when you talk about frostbite in the winter, we need to work with the county, we need to work with the port, we need the cities working together to figure out where we're going to put a low-barrier shelter. It's too easy to just say, not in my backyard, don't put it in my district. Let's build tiny houses that are somehow going to be paid for miraculously that are costing millions of dollars. It's a very complex problem. There's not a simple solution, and we should not be telling people that there's a simple solution that's free.
All right. This is, to start with candidate Donovan, do you support the ballot initiative for the jail? Why or why not, and what would be your alternative if not?
No, I don't support it. I voted against putting it on the ballot. I think the facility had, the proposal had four major problems when it was first put on in 2015. It was in Ferndale. It was too big. It did not spend enough money, if any money, dedicated to incarceration prevention and reduction. And the finance deal between the city and the county, nobody was happy with. Some of that stuff has been fixed, but it's still a very big jail in Ferndale. My worry is if you build a facility that big, the incentives that are existing right now for the city and for the county to keep people out of jail, those incentives will go away. So we need a new facility. We need a better facility, or we need to invest in the current facility. Actually, no matter what happens today, we need to invest in the current jail to make sure that it's not a fire hazard, not tomorrow, not, you know, we need to do that 10 years ago. In terms of long-term, I would like potentially to save something where the Work Release Center is, maybe a new facility that's much smaller than the one that's currently proposed. But we all need to recognize it's going to cost a lot of money.
Candidate Glasser. Candidate Glasser.
We can't build a big new jail because we have a good reason to get a lot of the people who are in the jail out of the jail. It was backwards to do it in the first place. I'm totally not supporting a big new jail. I think the old jail has to be fixed, and it's been years. And you see the people pointing fingers of, it wasn't me who didn't fix it. I would have fixed it if they wouldn't have given us the requisitions and the money. Well, somebody's to blame for the fact that the jail hasn't been fixed. And I think everybody in government should take a little piece of that responsibility, because everybody knew since it was built that it was a piece of crap. Excuse my language.
It's true.
But we've got to deal with that now. So what are we going to do? We're going to fix the old jail, then we're going to build a new jail in Ferndale, then we're going to redo the jail we just built, and then we're going to have to rebuild a new Sally Port for people who are waiting trial. Why are we doing that rather than just fixing what we have, using the jail that we have over in, on Division Street, and getting everybody out who shouldn't be there?
All right, and following up on that, candidate Glasser. Regardless of the outcome of the jail ballot issue, would you, how would you support continued and/or increased emphasis and funding for alternatives to incarceration? Please explain your position.
We spend 55% to 70% of our county's money on law and order. 55% to 70%. That's an overlay of pretty much the military budget in the federal government. And I'm going to assume that a good portion of the people in here think we spend too much on military budgets. I think we spend too much on law enforcement, because what we get in return, I don't know about you guys, but I don't feel any safer in the past few years with all that extra money that's come our way from the last jail tax. So what I think we need to be doing is, sorry, I'm going to be that broken record. We need to house the homeless. They're the ones who are ending up in jail. We need to build mental health facilities, not jails, because those are the people that are sitting in jail. And in Southern Washington, they built a $24 million facility for 115 teenagers for medical, for mental health issues. That's like 1/5th of what we want to spend on a big new jail. We can do better, and we can have much better outcomes if we just get the money out of putting people in jail and put it towards preventing.
Candidate Donovan.
We need to spend more money on incarceration reduction and prevention. And I mentioned this current proposal, which I don't support, is better than the last one. At least it acknowledges that. I agree with Amy in that we can take some of our public safety money out of incarceration in the very long term, and put that towards diversion, and put that towards mental health, and put that towards behavioral programs, and we're doing that. But that doesn't, you know, we need to make those investments. It doesn't just free up money. We need to recognize that those are investments that we need to make, and we're still going to probably need a better jail facility, hopefully smaller, definitely smaller than the one that's proposed. Amy's talked about getting it down to as small as 75 beds or something like that. We, right now, are doing like 450, 200 people plus in the main jail, 100-something people in the diversion center. I would love to be able to get it down, you know, to 100, a couple hundred, but thinking 75, I think that's just unrealistic. So we got to recognize, we can't just say there's going to be this free pile of money when we succeed in keeping people out of jail. It's going to cost money to keep people out of jail, and we should be spending that.
I'm going to ask this question again, since this is a topic that is in the news so much lately. What should the county do about the opioid crisis? And please include the county's pharmaceutical stewardship proposal in your answer.
I start.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to, Barry was mentioning, you know, our role as the Health Department. The opioid crisis, I fear, is going to get worse. And there's a couple of things we need. The Take Back program is something that, as county council, with the public, as Public Health Board, we've been supporting this unanimously. What didn't come up in the previous discussion is that people transition from the prescription opioids to heroin because it's a lot cheaper. And this is where we're getting a lot of, you know, a bigger, as big a public health risk. So we need to support the needle exchange program. It's only open for like half a day a week, but has tremendous demand. We need to make sure we're investing in those sorts of program, education programs. We need to ensure people are being trained in access to naloxone. I hope I'm saying that right. That these are things that we need to have our first responders, our firefighters, our police having, and other people in the community having access to. But I hope people really take a hard look at the needle exchange program, because it's an underappreciated, really important program that the county council supports.
Candidate Glasser.
I said 75 in the old jail, and we keep the Division Street jail. So I didn't think we can get our population down that much. But in terms of hardened people who require intense supervision at the old jail, that's the number that I'm looking at. I agree with everything my opponent just said. I'm a mental health worker. The reason why we have such a horrible opiate problem is I blame a huge amount on the pharmaceutical industries and on physicians who overprescribed. It is not the patient's fault that they got so much drugs that they're now addicted, and now they're cut off immediately and have to pee in a cup. And now if they don't pee in the cup, they don't get their medicine. And if they don't show up once a week to pay their copay, they don't get their medicine. The whole system is not looking at it from a patient point of view. We're looking at it from a law enforcement point of view, and we're looking at it from a doctor's point of view, and both of those are wrong. We need to look at people individually, and every program Todd talked about is absolutely wonderful. I think we should do it mobily, though. I think having it in one spot and having people have to go there is less convenient and would work better if we traveled around to the sites that they're at.
All right, this is your last question, and we'll start with you, candidate Glasser. How would you describe the principles that guide you in making personnel decisions? And how would those principles be reflected in your role on the council? I'm sorry, I think it means that
Personal.
Your personal decisions, and how would those principles be reflected in your role on the council?
I've said all along, I'm a therapist. I do every decision I make in the best interest of children. Everything I do, everything I've done for the past 40 years is in the best interest of children, because that's my population that I've worked with, is children who are marginalized, children abused, children neglected. If I can take that same approach to the council on making my decisions, I'll make amazing decisions, because it's about the future for our kids, that we all want a better future. We want good-paying jobs. We want clean water and air. And we want to make sure we teach kids respect and consideration, and that when we have treaty rights with Native Americans, we keep them, because we're good people, and we care about our fellow human beings. So that's what drives me. It's always driven me. It's not about politics. I don't plan to make this a career. I'm too old to make it a career. This is it. And I plan to leave, hopefully, a legacy of changing some rules so that the people who are marginalized get a little bit better shake in the county.
And candidate Donovan.
Yeah, I guess a couple ways to answer this. Not personnel, but personal decisions I make as a county council person. When I ran the first time, I emphasized, I want to have everybody thinking, like, where do you want to be in 20 years? What do you want Watkins County to look like in 20 years? And in terms, not just long-term planning, but, you know, as a vision of what kind of community do we want to be? You know, what do we want to represent to the world? Whether we're talking about the future of our public health and safety, whether we're talking about the future of our economy, and, I mean, at a macro level, everything that comes our way, I like to think about, what do we want to look like? What do we want to be 20 years from now? That's my main guiding principle. That, and I like data. I'm really driven by data. I want to see what works and what doesn't work.
All right, and you can continue now and give your closing statement.
I close. Okay.
Yes.
I introduce myself. I'm Todd Donovan. I'm running for reelection to Watkins County Council. And I was elected originally in 2015. There's an odd set of circumstances that has me running again this year. The main thing is, I want to serve more than one term on Watkins County Council. Amy's even recognized, she agrees that my positions are excellent. You've said this. You agree with most of them. I think that entitles me to a second term. Unfortunately, if I was to wait till this full term ends, I would have to run against Sap Pauls to do, who's a dear friend of mine, who I worked really hard with two years ago we got elected. I don't want to run against Sap Pauls to do. Amy has this chart she shows people about how we can stay on council together. She said I could, like, stay on council and be her mentor, or I could run for higher office. I'm not going to run for higher office. This is the only thing I want to do. And it really is a choice between Amy and I. I'm not going to be able to stay on county council if Amy gets elected, and that's just how it is. So I'm Todd Donovan. Thanks.
And candidate Glasser.
There's one woman on the council, Barbara Brenner. She's a wonderful woman, but she's not very progressive. We have no other women on the council. If my opponent gets his wish, he'll be on the council, and in two years, Sap Paul will get elected to be on the council, and there's not going to be any change. It's just going to be the guys still with one woman. We hope that there'll be some other women on the council. I'm assuming up in the crowds, Mary Kay would like to get there, and Rebecca would like to get there. But we don't have any guarantees. All we can guarantee in life is today, and maybe tomorrow. And I want to be on the council, because, again, when I heard Carl Weimer was leaving back last summer, I was like devastated at the thought of our most progressive council member leaving, and thought, I want to be able to serve with Todd for those two years that he'll still be there. And hopefully, him and Sap Paul will decide what they can do in terms of running. But right now, we need it now. And I want to be the female on your council. I want to be the social worker on your council. I want to work with Mr. Donovan, because I want to make sure that the progressives stay in power. And that might not happen if I don't win, because I'm one of the progressives you want to have there. Thank you very much for your time, everybody.
Let's thank them for running for office. And being here tonight. We changed up our schedule here, because we were hoping that Philip Morgan would be able to attend. Unfortunately, as you know, we invited both candidates for the Watkins County Council District, and Rudd Brown is here. Mr. Morgan was not able to come due to a personal emergency. We hope that he might send somebody with a statement, and that way we could go ahead and ask questions of candidate Brown. That didn't happen. So we regret that he's unable to be here. We're sorry that the debate will be canceled. Candidate Brown has very graciously said he would stand around in the hallway and answer questions for all of you. And so I will turn this over now to Judith, who is going to continue with the school board.
Thank you, Jane. We will follow the same rules for this portion of the forum as we did for the last. And these are two candidates for the Bellingham School Board. Just a brief note about what these candidates are looking to do with that board. The directors on the school board are the elected governing body of our school district. They serve a four-year term, and there's no salary. The school board sets the general policies of the district. One of the critical duties is the adoption of the district's budget and proposal for any school levies to be placed on the ballot to the people. The board sets policies and approves all spending via the budget. The board also sets salaries for district employees. The board's governing responsibilities fall into four major areas. One is vision on student achievement. The second is structure, which provides prudent financial planning and oversight. Accountability is the third, which sets specific goals and process for evaluation. And advocacy is the fourth, as champions for public education in the local community and before the state and federal policymakers. There are two open positions on the school board this year, but only one is, but we only are including the position that has opposing candidates. The second position has no opposition. Again, the rules of this race will be the same. And I encourage members of the audience to submit questions for these candidates. We will again be starting with one-minute opening statements. And candidate Mason, you have chosen to go first, so we'll ask you to give us your opening statement.
Perfect, thank you. I'm Jen Mason. I'm running for Bellingham School Board, position four. It's my child in the audience, so if she makes noise or cries, you don't have to feel bad for me. I've had the honor of serving children and families in this community for the last 15 years, and much of that time was spent running the education program at Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Services of Watkins County, where I developed and delivered violence prevention education curriculum, and did trauma counseling in every public middle and high school in Watkins County. I worked with about 10,000 students and their teachers and counselors, and had the opportunity to see how we can help students who've experienced trauma to heal. I am also a parent. My daughter has cerebral palsy, and she is in the developmental preschool at Happy Valley Elementary School. Most recently, I've served as the board president for Bridget Collins Family Support Center, and I've served on Bellingham School District Special Education Advisory Board. So I have a lot of experience representing and advocating for children and families in this community. I care about so many different policies and priorities. Okay, I thought it seemed like a long time. I'll just stop.
All right. My name's Teri Hill McIntyre. I've been involved in education for the past 20 years, and in the Bellingham School District for the last 14. I have two daughters that graduated from Seehom High School. One is a sophomore in college, and the other is a recent college graduate. Over the years that I've been in the Bellingham School District, I've served as PTA president at Carl Kosher, Colson, and Seehom High School. I've also served on many PTA committees. As well as at the district level, I've served on over 15 committees and task forces, and have had the opportunity to work with administrators and staff in every single one of our 22 schools. And in 2013, I co-chaired the school bond that was passed that we are now currently building a new Seehom High School and have a new options and Happy Valley, along with other improvements that have been made to the district for ADA and safety compliance. I've also had the opportunity to be a coach for YMCA and for the Boys and Girls Club, as well as a Girl Scout leader. I'm very passionate about public education, and I'm very passionate about serving all children in our district.
Thank you. I do want to mention that you have challenge cards in front of you. You may challenge one another. The guidelines for that is it's 45 seconds to state your challenge and 45 seconds to respond to it. And you each have one challenge. All right. So we'll proceed then with other questions. This one then will be to candidate Hill McIntyre. How do you define what constitutes a quality education for students? In your view, how well are the Bellingham schools currently meeting that standard?
A quality education, I describe as an equal opportunity for all children, and that this is provided in a sense that there's no barriers for children despite their ability, their economic background. I think that the Bellingham School District has done a really good job over the last seven years or so of really working to improve that ability. We now offer free school supplies for all the children in our district. So seven years ago, Colson Middle School, it would cost you $350 to get school supplies to get into school. Watkins Middle School was $100, and now the district has gone across the board that there's no charge to any family for that. We've also looked at being able to provide programs for families, for students, that there's no charge to students to be able to play sports and to be involved in clubs and activities. So I feel that our district has made big strides towards providing that opportunity for all children.
Thank you. A second question. What do you believe
Do I get
Oh, I'm sorry.
She speaks for both of us now. Okay, quality education. So I think the Bellingham School District has done a really great job of defining what a quality education is through the Bellingham Promise, which really guides, it's a strategic planning document for the district, and it really lays out what a quality education would be, which I think looks very well-rounded, where it's rich in academics, but also enrichment opportunities, where students have the opportunity to take part in sports and the arts, all the way from early childhood education to when they graduate. Also, for our students with disabilities, their education includes going all the way through the Community Transitions Program when they're 21. To me, quality education also looks equitable. So to make sure that all students have a great experience, and that we are able to understand and know when students have additional challenges and accommodate those. And I think a key part of a quality education is that we have well-compensated educators and school staff.
Thank you. All right, we'll proceed to the next question then. What do you believe is the biggest challenge teachers are facing right now in the Bellingham schools? schools?
So, from what I've heard from a lot of teachers, one of the biggest challenges that they're having in their classrooms is teaching to students who have diverse needs. So, they have a lot of kids in the class with a lot of different needs and being able to teach effectively to all of them. We know that we have kids who are together that have different linguistic backgrounds, different cultural backgrounds, students who, for whatever reason, maybe are falling behind learning standards, students with IEPs. Many of the teachers I know support not tracking our students, so having them more grouped together in classrooms. But also, that it's just really hard because they don't have the adequate supports. So, to me, that looks like making sure we have reading specialists, it makes sure that we have students that can be pulled out for additional support, school counselors. I think that's probably one of the biggest needs that teachers have right now.
Thank you. Candidate Hill McIntyre?
Agreed on that. I have a lot of friends that teach and probably the biggest thing that they've talked about in the last couple of years is the support services for the classroom for kids that are ELL or kids with behavioral and emotional support issues. One of my friends who teaches in high school right now has a junior class, it's a required class to graduate, to kids that are refugee students that read and write at a kindergarten level, but they are expected to pass their class with only ELL support available one day a week. So, these are areas that make it very difficult for students, being able to have more support for teachers to help with students that are having emotional and social issues. Another friend described that in the last seven years, she's seen a lot of children that are truly broken. And being able to provide those services in the classroom seemed to be, to me, to be the number-one problem that teachers are facing right now, to be able to provide that equitable education to all students.
Do you support expanding the school district's career and technical education programs to provide career opportunities for those students who do not plan to go to college?
I am a huge supporter of that. I don't feel that every student fits into the typical, you know, I'm going to graduate as a senior, I'm going to go to a community college or to a four-year school. I think there are kids that part of what helps them stay in school is that ability to have hands-on types of things that can keep them interested in the classroom. And again, we've been able to coordinate with the district to work with Bellingham Technical College, to work with this Gadget Valley Training Center, to help kids who are really struggling to stay and have something that really gives them that joy of coming to school. I understand that all subjects are important for students, but I also feel that there are students that if they don't have some of that tactile, hands-on learning that really helps them feel good about themselves and be able to be able to come into school and have excitement. I think that our district needs to continue to expand those services.
Candidate Mason?
Yes, I 100% support the expansion of those programs. I sometimes think that career and technical education programs or vocational programs are looked at as like a secondary, like a lesser type of education, and I just don't think that that's true. I happen to be somebody who did enjoy going to college and getting my master's degree. I think that there's value in whatever type of education and workforce people go into after high school. One of the things that I think that we can be looking at is how can schools be on the forefront of expanding our workforce? For example, we know that right now, solar panel installers are the fastest-growing field industry in the United States right now. How can our schools be helping to get students into those types of jobs? What could we be doing to make sure that not only do our kids have jobs, but they have jobs in a field that's growing and they have jobs in a field where they can get jobs here in our community?
All right, thank you. Is there a serious issue of absenteeism in the district? And if so, how do you propose that the board deal with it? How do you think the state requirement for a community truancy board will affect absenteeism?
Yes, I do think that there is a big problem. It was my turn first, right? Okay, there we go. I do think that there is a big problem of absenteeism in our district. And I think that we need to be looking at what the underlying causes of absenteeism are. Absenteeism, students who are being suspended, bullying, a lot of those things are symptoms of other problems in our society. And we need to be looking at the root causes of those. So, why are students not coming to school? When I was doing trauma counseling, a lot of the students that I was working with, quite frankly, it was success if they got out of bed in the morning. It was success if they got on the bus. And so, we really have to look at what is it that is keeping those students from coming to school, providing enough school counselors so that we can adequately respond to those needs, having family engagement specialists. I think for the community truancy board, we really need to be making sure that we have the right folks who are on that board, who will understand those issues and have a comprehensive look at what we can be doing through our students.
Thank you.
Absenteeism is definitely a problem from kindergarten through 12th grade. And when we see kids that aren't in the classroom on a regular basis, it's hard for them to catch up. It's hard for them to feel a part of the community. And agreed, we need to find out what is causing the absenteeism. When my kids started in school, at a certain point in time, if you had 20 absences, you were suspended from school. Suspension does not equal with being able to help somebody who's having absenteeism. So, I appreciate that our district has worked to get rid of that suspension due to absences. And we do definitely need to find what the root causes and help those students and their families, providing those services and the support that they need to be successful. We see kids that once they get to high school who are absent a lot more tend to not graduate or tend to drop out. So, that's definitely a thing. And as far as a truancy board, I agree with Jen. Unless we have people that really understand what the problem is, a truancy board isn't going to be something that's going to resolve the issues.
Where do art, music, and sports fit into your priorities for allocating financial resources?
I believe that having art, music, and sports is really critical for a child's development. And I've seen my girls benefit from the Strings Program started in elementary school, providing arts in the classroom, having art students come into the classroom at a young age and continuing that and providing those opportunities all the way throughout. I appreciate that our Bellingham Public School Foundation has been able to raise money to help support the Strings Program and be able to provide instruments to all students that want to be a part of it. I think that when you have a community that supports arts and music and sports, I think that you see a community that has a lot of richness to it and that you're able to embrace a lot of diversity. Everybody has different styles, and I think that that is one of our most important parts of our school district. And I believe that funding needs to be there.
Candidate Mason?
I mean, I believe that arts, music, and sports should be a central part of our schools. I was involved in music all through school. I was involved in band and choir and drama. I was involved in dance team, which is a sport, when I was in high school. And it was really integral to me growing up and to me learning confidence and working as a group. I think especially, I've had the opportunity to be an arts workshop facilitator for students who are from marginalized communities and really been able to see the amazing and really moving impacts the arts can have on their lives. I think that we need to be making sure that we're correcting inequities in participating in those programs, despite the fact that we've reduced the fees for athletics, that we have been able to provide instruments for some of our kids. We still see a big gap in race and income in who is participating in those programs. So, I think we need to be looking at what would enable more students to participate.
All right, thank you. What is the district doing and what else could be done to proactively prevent violence?
Oh, well, so, they're doing a lot of different things. I mean, the district, the district right now in their... So, they're working right now with some, with community organizations like Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Services that's coming into their schools to talk about things like sexual harassment, bullying, dating violence, sexual assault, boundaries, consent, all of those types of issues. I think that we need to be increasing the amount of education that we're doing. I suppose it depends on what kind of violence we're talking about. In terms of violence coming from outside the school, I know that in the last bond in our facilities, we are improving the safeguards in the schools. If there is violence, you know, say a school shooter situation were to happen in our schools. In terms of violence happening from within the schools, I think that we need to have, again, more counseling programs for kids who are bullying. I think that we need to be working even more to mandate programs like Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Services in the classroom.
Thank you.
Addressing the safety issue part of it, in the last bond, that was part of it. There now, all 22 of our schools have camera systems within the schools that we did not have previously. And there's work on improving the safety as far as lockdowns on the doors, having that available to teachers, blackout curtains, all of that. So, on that part of it, I think our district has been making those moves and will continue. I know that their long-term plan is to continue on with that. As far as individual safety, I agree with Jen. We need to be providing services and support to our, not only to our counselors and that, but also support to our teachers in helping address some of these issues, as well as providing more education for our students. And I don't think that this needs to be something that starts in middle school or high school. I believe this is something that can start at a young age to be working towards this. So, I'm all for supporting all of that.
If you could do only one thing to better our schools, what would it be?
Oh, gosh.
Tough question.
Yeah, just one thing. I guess my one thing that if I could, the perfect, if you could have that perfect world, I would say my one thing would be that we would make sure that for all students, they would feel that they have, and that families would feel that there is 100% support for them, that there's the ability to come to school and not be afraid that when they get home, where are they going to be living at? What are they going to be doing for food? I think we have, our school program, school system has started providing meals for families in the evenings. We provide breakfast at our Title I schools. Those kids now don't have to worry about breakfast in the morning. It's just there for them when they get there. So, I think for me, in the perfect world, we would just continue to increase these services and make all children and families feel welcome and safe.
Yeah, if I could only do one thing in this district, I would implement two years of universal preschool being available for all of our students. Early childhood education is really the most impactful thing that we can do in terms of making sure that students go into school ready for kindergarten and that they don't fall behind. What we see right now is that kids go into school and they're behind, and then they continue to fall further and further and further and further behind. And that if we have students who come to school kindergarten-ready, I mean, this is what study after study after study shows, is that they are much more likely to have success in later years in school and later in life. To me, that looks like two years of universal preschool. You know, we're inching our way towards more early childhood education programs. But two years of high-quality preschool, full-time high-quality preschool has been shown to be most effective. In fact, that two years being literally double the effectiveness of one year of preschool. So, that I think should be the goal.
Another question from the audience, and we're not trying to cause trouble here, but the two of you seem to agree about quite a lot. What is the quality or issue that distinguishes you from the other candidate?
Ooh. You have to go first. I have to go first, all right. Well, I think this doesn't just distinguish me from Terri, who I think is wonderful and we do agree on a lot of things, but distinguishes me from the rest of the board, which is currently right now, we don't have anybody who is on our school board who has actually worked in our K through 12 public schools. I think that's a voice that needs to be heard. I have worked with thousands of students. I have been in front of classrooms. I have sat in the counseling office and talked with counselors while they're trying to figure out how to respond to crises in their school. I've talked with parents. You know, I have that experience of working within the school system with our students, with our classrooms, our teachers, administrators. And so, to me, that's just something, I think that's different from the rest of the school board, that we should have that voice heard on our board as somebody who has had that work experience in our schools. So...
I think my differences is that I have the experience of raising a child all the way through graduating from college. And I've had the ability to work with the school district over the last 14 years. I've sat on budget committees. I've sat on start times for the schools, how we've changed our start time now to start later for our high school students. I've sat in on standards-based grading and helping develop some tools for our high schools for that. So, I feel like I bring with me experience and real-life experience of actually having gone through all of this and then also being able to understand where our district sits on a lot of these issues and also seeing where in the past 14 years where I'd like to see changes made. So, I feel that's where my strongest difference with Jen is.
All right. This is similar, but it is different. If you were elected, how would you measure your success as a school board member at the end of your four-year term?
I would measure my success, when we go back to talking about absenteeism, we see that as absenteeism decreases, we see graduation rates increase. And I would look at my success as seeing graduation rates increase across the board for all demographics. For, you know, right now, we've seen certain populations that the graduation rate has increased, but other populations where it has not increased. I'd also like to be able to say, to go along with that, is that helping those students find where to go after school and being able to look at some of the successes of those students. I feel like our district at a certain point in time quits following that. And I'd like to be able to see, do we have kids that have made it into apprenticeship programs? Do we have kids that have gone on to two-year schools or four-year schools? Are they doing something with the arts world? So, that would be my success, to see graduation rates increase across the board.
The measure that I would be looking at is have we reduced the poverty gap? So, the poverty gap is that gap that exists between the students whose families have low income and the students whose families do not have income. And we know that that poverty gap impacts so many different things, like college enrollment, participation in athletics and the arts, graduation. And our gap in the Bellingham School District is actually larger than the state average and larger than that of comparable districts. So, that's really concerning that we, that that gap is so big. So, that would be the measure that I would be looking at for success, is are we, were we able to achieve a step closer to equitability? Were we able to make things better for our students who have some of the highest needs? And will we be able to close that gap?
Those are the questions that we have for you. Neither of you has chosen to use a challenge.
Oh.
And, well, you don't have to. But we're ready for closing statements if either of you or both would like to make a challenge before we move to that part. There's an opportunity.
I'm okay.
All right. All right. Well, then, candidates, you now have an opportunity to make a one-minute closing statement. And we'll start then with candidate Hill. Let's see.
I think it's me.
That would be, yes. Yes, it would be you because you were the first to open, that's right.
Yes. So, well, thank you so much for the League, for having us in for City of Bellingham. And thanks to the League for all of the great work that you do in this community, all of the advocacy work, the information that you put out there. It's a real, it's something that's great in Waukam County. I'm the product of public education. My daughter will be the product of public education. And I believe that public education is really the cornerstone of our democracy and that our educators are the stewards of that mission. I think that education exists in the context of a lot of other issues in this community, housing affordability, disability rights, violence against women, you know, all of these different issues, homelessness. And I have been an advocate on many of those issues. A lot of our elected officials in here can tell you that they've seen me involved in lots of different things. And so, I look forward to being a voice for all of those issues, bringing that to our school board. I look forward to being a voice for somebody who has worked in our classrooms, and I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to, again, thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. This is the second time I've been able to participate in one of these. I would really like to ask for your vote. I am a person who's very passionate about public education. My children had a wonderful experience in the Bellingham School District. I feel that it really prepared them for life beyond high school. I too am a product of public education and a graduate of Western Washington University. And I feel like what I can bring to our district is the voice of somebody with experience and also to the voice of somebody who's also had experience across the board with the students in our district, with Girl Scouts, with coaching. I would really like to ask for your vote on November 7. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes this portion of the program. We want to thank you, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, thank you for coming to our forum and participating in the public process. It's so important for our community. We appreciate it. We appreciate it. (applause)[1783.36]